It is seven o'clock, early March 18th. Welcome. We will call our meeting to order. Roll call. Joel?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
And here, Dr. Slarnow? Has our meeting been properly noted and certified?
Yes.
Please join me in the presence of leaders.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation on one ground, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to read our mission statement?
I will. The Montmorell Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you. To A, approval of our agenda. Does anyone like to make a motion?
No.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? To B, approval of our March 4th, 2024 Board Regular and Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Carly, seconded by Joel. All those in favor of approving our March 4th, 2024 Board Regular and Executive Session Meeting Minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Three A, consider approval of students' international travel to Guatemala and Belize during spring break of 2025. Mrs. Perez and Mr.?
Hello. Jess Perez can't be here today because she's been in the forensics team. But I think that you've all received the agenda for this trip. So there's a nice mix of homestay, and there's going to be some visiting, some ancient mine ruins, and some, you know, yeah, obligatory time on the beach a little bit too. So we did this a few years ago. The students really enjoyed it. It's a really nice trip. Another great thing is this year, again, the Oi One family is continuing their great tradition of the Tyler Oi One Memorial Scholarship. So that provides a full scholarship for one student to go on this trip and have that experience. And we're seeking approval from the board for that, for this trip.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a kid who's a Costa Rican child, and it's staying half and half. Phenomenal.
Excellent. Yes, yes, yes.
Is it open to any Spanish student?
Yes, let me think here.
I mean, yeah.
Jess knows all the answers to these questions. I think it's sophomores, if I'm not mistaken.
Definitely.
I think so. Well, yeah, anybody that's into Spanish is eligible to attend.
One thing I'm reminded of is whenever our staff takes students on international trip, it is not a vacation for staff members. It is very stressful, and I'm grateful that you're willing to lend your time and talents to do it.
Yes, and I will share that with Ms. Perez, because she's taking all the stress, hopefully.
Do you have a cap on how many kids speak out?
There's not a cap necessarily. I think every eight students, there's another chaperone. So the more, the merrier. I see there's a lot of excellent students in attendance right now, so if you're interested, sign up. But yeah, I don't think there's necessarily a cap. I'm not sure of the maximum, it's been in the past, but...
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve the international trip to Guatemala and Belize. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Three E, consider approval of student attendance at the DECA International Career Development Conference in California.
Hi, I'm Allison Carroll, I'm a marketing business teacher and main DECA advisor at the high school. And I've got two DECA rock stars with me tonight, Sophie Dawson and Laurel Holland, who honestly are not just DECA rock stars from out of the state of Wisconsin. Both of these ladies have been on stage at internationals. Sophie was finals last year, and Laurel was medalists last year, and Laurel was second place per freshman year. So some states never get on stage, and we've got two girls who are on stage in this room with us. So we are hoping to attend the International Career Development Conference in April. It's in Anaheim this year, held at the big Anaheim Convention Center. And we believe, let's see, April 26th, and return on May 1st. And we took 29 students to state this year, and actually had between, we had 16 qualified to the ground, and another four who were accepted into the leadership academies. Of course, with other sports and everything, we had two who aren't able to make it, so we've got 18 though that would love to go. And we'll be doing competitions. There are workshops the kids will go to. Of course, we get to spend a little time at Disneyland, maybe some time at the beach, and just see what our students can do. So again, we're asking for approval to attend ICDC this year.
Does anyone have any questions?
Congratulations to the students. Pretty amazing, so...
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam, to approve student attendance at the DECA International Career Development Conference in California. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Thank you. Have fun.
Good luck, everyone.
Three C, recognition of participating Montmorell High School art show students. This month is art appreciation month, so we are incredibly happy to have you all here with us, to share your art, and have a chance to talk with you.
Yes, and thank you to our staff who helped put on this year's program as a historian. I think this is maybe the third or fourth year, is that right, Mrs. Kane? Have we been doing this?
That'd be sport, yeah.
It's quite an honor to invite not only our artists, but their families. What we'd love to do is maybe just take a minute to connect each board member with their selected artist. And you can see here in column A is the board member and/or the senior leadership team member who selected your piece. Column B is the students with whom we selected. And then just talk a little bit about it. And at the end, what we'd love to do is to be able to just take a group picture with everybody. And if it's okay with parents, if we could maybe place your students' artwork, as well as a picture of your student, on our district's webpage and social media, it would be our honor. And I thank you for what you do to inspire our young people, and they're just magnificent, magnificent talents, so... If everyone doesn't necessarily know everyone in the room, might I just first, you can see every board member's name out here with their name tags. When we say go, we'll ask you to miraculously come down the steps. And then I'd like to introduce my friends and colleagues who are part of our senior leadership team. First, Scott D. Young. Scott is our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. And to his left is our Director of Human Resources, Aaron Esler here. Just third in, on the right is Aubrey Hank. She is our Coordinator of Resources Development and Public Relations. And Sarah Straka is our Director of Instruction. Brian Johnson, who is our Student Services Director, is out of town tonight, so I get to honor two students today, Caitlin and Max. So does everyone have a minute of what the rules are? Okay. Love it. Why don't we just take a minute to come on down and visit with your artist? We have a little gift for you, and then we'll take that picture.
We have to say first, "Hi."
Thank you guys. Welcome here.
I'm super. So I hope that was... I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. I'm sure. Looking up. I feel like I knew this. I got to the back, gave it to me. There's too many of us. We can't all fit down.
I like that one. Yeah. I think she's a good color. She's a good color. I don't know. Yes, yes, yes. I think something like... Or a vegetable, or a grilled pork, or a chicken. Those two are... Yeah.
I think it was like six. I did not. Thirty-three hours.
Yeah. I'm having a fever, and I'm having a fever next time Friday. I just came out like a bad child, and I was like, oh, suddenly I was like, not in there. And I was like, you know, I was like, right? I walked out, and I looked up, and I was like, oh, I'm like, oh, geez. So I'd be putting the house...
Fan required.
Right.
I was gonna go over there and... Yeah. I mean, it's all this is gonna slot more. We're never gonna drop this.
That's what they got. We need to... He offers a guy. So he's still... We're... 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 That's so nice of that school.
They have each other.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
From Chicago.
Thank you.
Hi. Congratulations.
Well, we actually have the DNR app. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Bill, dinner?
Mrs. Kane, would you, I hate to put you on the spot, but would you be willing to tell me about the National Art Society and Honor Society?
Sure. So we have a National Art Honor Society club. It's like an art club, so we meet twice a month and do art projects, obviously, but then also we do some sort of service connected to the arts in our community. So many of these students are part of it. And, yeah, I'm trying to think of a project we did recently. We do printmaking, all sorts of fun, fun...
You decorated all businesses for Christmas.
Yeah. We did the portraits. Yes, and the memory project, yeah, we'll be posting that on our Instagram page, mhhs_art, so you can kind of follow some of the things that we do. Everybody is welcome to be part of it. You don't have to be in an art class, which is nice, because some students can't fit things in their schedule, but still want to participate in some arts, so...
Thank you for your sponsorship, as well as please extend our gratitude to Mrs. Showers as well. Let's give a round of applause. There's gonna be a rush. Coliver is here in a few minutes. People are gonna be celebrating with their families. You're welcome to certainly stay. We'd love to have you participate in our board meetings, although we also know you probably have other things you'd rather be doing tonight. Thanks. We'll give you a minute if you wanted to exit, but thank you, everybody.
Alrighty, three E, school news.
I'd be happy to. I know Ethan is probably out at the forensics competition that's happening today. We're expected to come back to around 7:30 tonight, so we wish our forensics team well. I wanted to take note that today our math students, grade seven and eight, we had four seventh graders, four eighth graders who competed at a math tournament and came up aces, came up real strong. In fact, so strong that they're going to be going to Madison College on May 15th to compete. And I think if it's okay with the board, I'd love to invite those young people and their families to come at a future board meeting, so those students can be recognized. They were really excited. In fact, speaking of Colivers, that's where they went afterwards to celebrate, so we're happy for them. The spring sports season started today, and I think for the first time probably in at least four or five years, the ground has been ready to go. Usually we had to worry about snow melting or the ground being frozen. Kids were able to get out right away today. And also, in celebration, this Thursday night, our FFA students will be hosting their annual banquet. This is just a wonderful community event where our students plan the vast majority of it, from the pool to inviting past FFA members, our alumni. It really will promise us to be a great evening. Thank you to our FFA team, both current and alumni. And then lastly, Board Member Myers might know a lot about this, because bless his heart, he gave a lot of his time this weekend with the troll classic. How'd that go?
It was great. The Montmorel Basketball Club has been a very generous friend to the district, and the basketball club hosted 108 different youth teams to the area. So multiply that by 10 kids and a couple of parents each, that brings a couple thousand people to town. So very successful weekend, ton of work by volunteers throughout the community, so it truly is a community event, and it's special to see everybody come together, so I'm very well.
Thank you for participating, and we do charge in many respects.
Any board members have school news to share?
Tuesday is the choir pops concert, 7:30. And then, it's a little ways away yet, the April 19th is the MHK5 PTO mini prom at Silent Auction. It's very cute. We turned in too many proms years ago, and some of the kids get very dressed up.
Anyone else? Any school news to share?
Just ACT is coming up on Wednesday. Thanks to all the staff members who put forth their time to prepare the kids for that big event.
Three E, citizen comments.
Oh, welcome to Anna King. Hi, Anna.
Well, I thought I kind of doubled tip a little bit, but thank you so much for recognizing our students. That was really special, and I think, I don't know, it's just nice for them to hear that other people are seeing their work and moved by it besides their art teachers. So that was very meaningful. And then I also signed up, I'm here representing MHKA, so thank you from that perspective for all of your time and service and all the work that you do for our kids.
Alrighty. Board A, personnel transactions, recommendations and employment status matters. Dr. Slarnow, I believe you have something to share.
I do. We want to congratulate one of our team members at the district office who's preparing to retire here at the end of the year. And in that, I'm referring to Mara Shetty. Mara is a very familiar name to all of you, especially our families who've gotten to know her. If their students receive any kind of specialized services in our district, she serves as the Administrative Assistant for Student Services. And she has done that for almost 24 years. And let's talk about brain drain, leaving that position. Not only does she do it so well, her paperwork is just exceptional. She does it with such grace and poise. Whenever we have questions that arise, as might be the case when it comes to special education law, she is always listening with a helping heart. Prior to her participating in the role she's currently in, she was actually, here's a little fun fact for you, she was actually the Administrative Assistant to our Director of Instruction back in the day. But just because those of you who know her know her to be someone with really student-service-oriented mindset, she has just found her natural niche. She'll be retiring with us at the end of June, and we anticipate posting this position very soon, so that way we can allow for some time to bridge between both, as that, as you imagine, is a very critical position within our organization. She and her husband are awaiting a grandchild here soon, so this is an exciting time for them, and maybe realize the vision of one day, maybe making a house up in the northern pines of the state. So I know you join me in wishing her well. She definitely will be missed in this community. Mara Shetty.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our personnel transactions?
I mean, I wanna say no.
I will second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve our personnel transaction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to go out to discuss? Otherwise, would someone like to make a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Discussion items, 6A, a committee of legislative liaison member reports. Committee on Legislative Engagement Committee, Carly.
So I will start with, actually, we met two times since the last update. We had our second meeting bumped up early to avoid spring break, so we met, and similar agendas between the two. So we met on the 26th of February, and then again, just a couple of hours ago. On the 26th, we reviewed the advocacy letter about the school safety funding that you've already seen. We talked about the facility forum that had recently happened, the first facility forums. An hour ago, we talked about the second. And we looked at the sponsorship guide and had a long discussion on the advertising policy 51. That, again, like, a lot of those same topics. Earlier today, you'll be, we'll be discussing the sponsorship guide this evening, and you'll see the policies coming back for final approval. Though one update I would give is that the, on the Office of School Safety Funding, the Senate did put it on their calendar last week and passed it, so thank you for reviewing that letter and signing off on it and getting it out. That's it for...
Any questions for Carly? Sina, Adam, do you want to talk about the Education Committee?
Can I get an assist on this one?
I will do it.
Thank you. Because my computer died, and I was not here for it, so I think I'll never even...
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, can I go back to the community update real quick?
Sure.
I did just want to add, I forgot to mention that we talked about the break room, the snacks in the break room, and the progress that we've made there. We've had the pharmacy, we've had QuickTrip, we have some other groups lined up to do that, and so it's really great to see that community engagement. And thank you to Aubrey and Joel and Mia for helping to coordinate that. So we've got some good momentum, and we've been in IC and the middle school, and are getting to the PC and the YLC, so... Education Committee, the last meeting was the beginning of the month, it was on the 4th. And we talked about the curriculum updates, we talked a little about the ACT coming up, we talked a little bit about the literacy, the literacy legislation and the impact of that. We were still, I think, waiting for official approval from the Joint Finance Committee for the literacy curriculum. I don't, we're not expecting any problems, they just hadn't gotten around to officially approving it yet. And there may be some pending legislation at some point to extend some of the implementation times on that. In, let's see, curriculum updates, we did, just, we got an update on some of the things that are going on there, including looking at the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which I think we've already talked about as well, and some of the other committees. And the middle and high school math review, that's currently going on. Most of the time was really spent, there were some updates from equity, on the equity side. We also, the two main areas we spent our time, one was on a grading and assessment update where we had some guests come in and give us an update on where things are. And they led us through a, an exercise where, they led us through an assignment where the instructions were not clear and then use that to help illustrate why assessment based or why, I'm losing the reference. Standards based, that's it, thank you. Standards based grading gives students a better framework for their performance. And then we spent a bit of time reviewing the People Non-Discrimination Report that was then shown at the community meeting later either that week or following.
Thank you. Any questions for Carly? It's good that our literacy curriculum was on both lists. Alrighty. The Community Coalition, we have not met since I've last reported. Our next meeting will be April 23rd, so my report's very short. Joel, do you have anything to share from the village?
On the first Wednesday of this month, on March 6th, a lot of talk about parking. So they've been doing a lot of parking studies, not that that affects us tremendously here. One thing though, it looks like the Viking Valhalla Foundation has officially been formed. They appointed Brett Helverson to that board. Apparently in the notes here, and they mentioned that they suggested that a member of the district, so forth, would be involved. So I'm not sure what that means at this point, but that was mentioned earlier.
We too will have representation on the Valhalla Board as well, past Mrs. Nessan and/or Mr. Lundquist to represent this. What a great opportunity for them to come together.
Any questions for Joel? Okay, moving on then, 6B, discussion of our community survey.
Hey, good evening, Scott Gerard. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good, thanks for finding time to be here tonight. I'm just going to turn my computer around so everyone can see your nice face here. Give me 30 seconds where they can see.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And they have had a chance, the board that is, to see your proposal. While we get this all put together, I want to thank board members who've been a part of putting this together. Jessica, would you mind recognizing those individuals for us so that I can...
Oh, sure.
Who on the board has helped us?
Carly and Adam and myself have joined these meetings.
Excellent. And so here are a number of our board members. I'll do this so that you can see their bright shiny faces. Oh, I lost you. No.
Good evening, everybody.
There we go. Well, the floor is yours. I'm going to see if I can't turn this up just a skosh bit more, but the floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight. Scott, with school perceptions?
It does look like I'm not able to share my screen. Yes. Notice how he's kind of facing the ones that did not participate.
He's heard enough from us.
How do I call for an assist from one of my team members? Anyone can help me with, we can chill around him and share a screen?
Aubrey's coming.
More right. I think it's on the, is it locked through the participation?
That's what I'm wondering if you...
Go to people.
Word says three. And then the dots next to Scott's name. And then Add as a co-host.
I think co-host will let him.
Good. Good. Way to go.
I knew who to say.
Are you going to just ask for this?
Yeah, I can't max on the phone. Get back.
Does everyone see the screen up there?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So you all are pretty familiar with the school perceptions process at this point, but quick reminders, we try to, well, the folks who have been in on these meetings are probably tired of hearing from us, but we try to use really plain language. My colleague, Dr. Rob, likes to talk about the QuickTrip test, how would you talk to someone about this project if you were in line for coffee and glazers at QuickTrip? So if it's not language you would use in that kind of conversation, it may not be language we want to have in the survey. So try to be thinking about this, we really want to reach every community member as easily as possible to help them understand your project. So that's one of our biggest goals, is helping them understand what it is you all are doing, how you arrived here, and then getting their input on the plan you've developed. So that's kind of the mindset we're taking. I have the PDF open tonight, I will be taking notes on your feedback, so if you have questions or suggested changes, I'll be making notes and stuff, so you won't see it live, but I promise I'm taking notes. So we'll start out here on page one is the opening letter. And so we start out explaining since the last facility survey, what's changed, some of the actions that the district has taken, how you gathered feedback, and then named the project that is needing to be done. Capital B bold, we say we will not move forward until we hear from our taxpayers, our little confidentiality statement, and then the ways to take the survey. And then that's signed by the superintendent and the board. Any questions on this opening letter page?
Based on feedback from the community meeting we had, we should say, and maybe we say later, I missed it, who we serve at the ELC and PC, but the ELC is kindergarten building and the ELC PC, the PC is first and second grade.
Sorry, that was bringing up a little bit, but I think I heard you say about who will be served at the ELC?
That's right.
Yep.
Okay.
So, because we do say later, like, to accommodate our kindergarten students and better serve our primary center students, if I didn't have kids who went through the district, which we know 70% of the people taking this aren't going to, I feel like we need to spell it out right in that first page of who goes to what building, so they know what we're asking them to consolidate.
I'll make a note of that, it's a careful balance of not wanting to get too specific on the front and getting overly wordy, because that can turn some folks off. We did try to, we do explain later in the survey who's going where in that configuration. I'll make a note of it so that we can talk about it as a team. I appreciate that. Other thoughts on the opening letter? Okay. We'll move on to page two. So this is where we get into the facility challenges with that building as it exists right now. So state how its age, how sort of the modern education world has changed, and so these spaces aren't necessarily applicable anymore. And then we break it down into a few categories here of some of the challenges the building has. So we've got safety concerns and code compliance with some bullet points, aging building systems with some bullet points, and then inadequate support spaces with some bullet points. And then we acknowledge that even if those issues above are addressed, classrooms are still too small, and we give some context to that, in that the building would continue to lack space for a variety of things that are pretty important to schools. So we then make the statement that putting more money into this building is not a good use of tax dollars. Therefore, explain what we're doing, the district is recommending closing this building and updating slash expanding the primary center. And we explain some advantages to that plan. Any questions on this page?
Real quick, I think, I think a bullet point that should be recognized is how inefficient this building is. It's by far the most inefficient building we have as far as utility bills.
That's a good, yeah, maybe we can fit that in with aging building systems, we'll take a look at that.
And then is there any way that we can highlight the fact that those classrooms are still too small? Even if we address everything else, right now, it just kind of gets lost, three quarters of the way down the page. But that's, to me, that's a huge deal. Somehow bold that highlighted, whatever it might be. Or take it up to the top of the page or something. Yeah, we can make it flash. Be great.
I'm going to note of that. Thank you for that.
Did Joel just follow up on that? Because I wanted to hear your viewpoint, not having sat through a lot of the sausage on this, sausage making. Are you thinking that that whole paragraph should be up in the intro because otherwise it'll get lost?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, that's, if we break all of this down, we're trying to meet an educational need first of all. We have all these other concerns, certainly, and even if we address them, well, we still have not taken care of the base level for why we're even talking about this, is the educational needs of our kindergarteners.
So you're thinking this whole paragraph you'd like higher, is your suggestion?
Well, that would be, that would be my preference, but I, as long as we can highlight that the classrooms are too small, that's a big reason why we're even having this discussion to begin with.
Yeah, I think that we find bulleted lists are just really easy for folks to sort of grab attention, and so it's a good way to get them moving down the page and make sure they read through all of it versus blocks of text. If there's too much at the top, sometimes it can turn somebody off from reading everything there. But I think we can find a way to really highlight this.
Scott, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think it's okay where it is, but with the bolding or some emphasis in there, because I think as it's structured, it kind of layers you through, like, here's why this building is just so problematic and even, I think the flow is just better if it kind of builds that argument and then has that point, but I agree, I agree with you.
Either way, makes no difference to me.
I agree with you.
You know, let the experts write it, actually, I'm not going to.
Well, Scott, another idea, if we're big on the list, just add a fourth, you know, educational concerns and bullet point, classroom, classrooms being too small and so on and so forth.
I'm sorry, you cut out in the middle of what you were saying there.
I was just, I was just saying if we could, if we eliminate that paragraph altogether, if we want to stick with the list format, just add a fourth category and have that be number one of just educational concerns. And put a few bullet points as educational concerns.
I think we ended up working as a, as a survey development team into that paragraph, but I'm trying to recall what we had in an earlier draft, but I'll, yeah, we can see what, I think one thing that we want to avoid, because right now we've got five bullets, four bullets, three bullets, and then if we have a last one with two bullets, it almost de-emphasizes it, whereas switching back to a paragraph might sort of reorient people to reading. But we can talk about that as a, as a survey team as well, whether, maybe I can lay it out and see how it looks on the page.
You could put a little graphic next to it, a star, something that, because if you're saying the bullets are going to draw their eye, then they're just going to be like paragraph skip. So if you had another icon of some sort. Yeah, we don't need to, I mean, they can figure this out. Yeah, if it's in italics or something. My concern about it being a bulleted list is then it becomes another thing that like, oh, we'll just do all the things that you've listed, where the point is kind of like, we really can't do that with this building, right? I feel like it's a tiny bit different.
It's almost its own, yeah, piece of the puzzle.
But I do, I've thought this all along, like, how do we make that stand out a little bit more?
Yeah, we can look at some of our options with bolding or how to break that out. So then we move on to page three, and this will be like a centerfold, so you'll see the issues and on the next page in front of you is the proposed plan to address them. We've got a really great drawing here with numbered, numbered sections that line up with this list. So we say, to accommodate our kindergarten students and to better serve our primary center children, the district would. And we've got a long list of what we're doing here, all the work, and folks can kind of match that up to understand where in the building it would occur. Then we get into another advantage, these changes would also reduce the number of building transitions students must make and increase the time staff can spend with students because they won't need to travel. Then mentions how the plan would also address a few other urgent facility needs, small list of those needs. And then we get to really the big question on your survey, which is would you support a $34 million referendum fund, fund the facility plan? Get into the tax implications of that. And then we've got the definitely yes, probably yes, undecided, probably no, definitely no scale.
I'm wondering if this is a spot where, because we say kindergarten students and to better serve our primary center children, I don't think we've said yet that the primary center is first and second grade. So maybe that's a spot, since we say...
I agree, but at the same time, we're so far into it at that point that like, you've, you don't know what you didn't know when you read it ahead of time.
I think we really could have thrown up in that first paragraph, just parentheses. Kindergarten, parentheses. I don't even know if you have to spell it out, I mean, couldn't you just do like parentheses K and then like next to PC, one, you know, parentheses one, two? I mean, people were talking about the schools, I know.
Yeah.
I made a note to add that first and second grade piece. Any other questions or thoughts on this page with the plan?
So I know we only have so much space, so I don't, I'm just throwing this out there. So we're saying like, we need, we're going to expand the library. Well, we haven't told them anywhere that the library we have now isn't quite big enough to even have, like, you can have a class in it, but like a class at a time, like, it's very small space. So I feel like we're inferring that they're going to know that like, hey, we're doing this, and hey, we're doing two court gyms instead of one court gym because we don't have enough gym space. And granted, that's a lot to put into here. Also, we talk about removing the technology infrastructure. They don't know that the room it's in now floods. So, so I feel like if they don't know, I feel like if they knew, we would have maybe more people who are like, yes, I agree to this because we've made a point, a case for all of these, whereas I don't know that they necessarily tie to what we said is the reason we need to do it. And you guys have spent a lot of time on this, so I'm just throwing that out there.
I appreciate it. I mean, those are two small things that could be added to the list up above, under aging building systems, we did write, and the technology room floods, whatever. And then, you know...
Right, we talk about inadequate support spaces.
We say, we say how classroom and other instructional spaces, we could say classrooms, the library and other instructional spaces, you know, are too small or where.
I'm just trying to tie as many like pieces together so that there's not like, well, you don't need it, your library's fine, your, you know, you didn't mention the library, so it must be fine when in fact it's not.
Yeah. I liked where you headed with that bulleted list, it's all, it's all the ELC stuff into the PC.
Oh, good point. That's true.
So they wouldn't be able to see what's happening there. And I was playing back and forth in my mind, for people who know the building, having the, where the tech infrastructure moves into the existing music area would make sense. I guess the question is like, would you get better payoff by saying, move the technology infrastructure into a, you know, a dry area? I mean, I'm not saying that, but like...
70%.
Just talking about the issue rather than the specifics of what the plan is at this point.
70% of the people who are going to get this survey do not have kids in school. They may have had kids at one point, they may not have, but I know it came up a lot at my table, the first meeting, they didn't know which building did what, and they wouldn't know this.
So something like turning into, what you're suggesting is turning into the existing music area into, into, into a space that does not flood or does not have flooding issues or something to that tune to get the reason for the move.
Yep.
Okay. Like I said, I'm making comments, so, or making notes on all this, so don't worry.
I think, I don't, I don't know that there's a way to get it into the survey, but I think some of the, some of the changes are not just that the current spaces are inadequate, it's that we're now supporting or out of the same group, right? Now the libraries might be okay, but now that you're supporting three grades, like, it just naturally has to expand to support that.
And I would almost say too, like, instead of create playground space, I would put replace, because if we're going to tear it down, we're getting rid of playground space, like, so we're not, we are creating, but we're...
Need to be replaced either way.
Right, we are replacing demolished, I don't know the best verbiage for it, but I feel like the more information we can give them, but a chewable chunks...
Removing and replacing.
Yeah, removing and replacing, something like that. Yeah, removing and replacing, something like that, like.
Okay. Something like replace playground equipment?
Um, like remove and replace, because we're gonna, we're gonna tear down the existing ELC playground because we're gonna tear down the ELC. So it's removing and replacing. So it's not like, oh, we're just gonna add another playground. We're actually getting rid of one. Because we say demolish the building, but I, people don't necessarily think that includes the playground and the, you know, all the stuff connected to it.
Is it helpful to put an adjective in front of playground space, like outdated? Because to me, in my mind, so much of it has to do with just that it's hard on the hands for kids
Right.
and that kind of stuff. It's safe, but it's not, it's not as safe as we, yeah.
This is Ryan, with the word relocate, maybe work in the beginning, relocate the playground and replace outdated equipment?
Yes, I think so.
Thanks, Ryan, that's a good, good call.
Yes.
We're gonna run out of space here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wordsmith a little bit. I can't promise we get every word that's suggested tonight in, but we'll do our best to, to make it still accessible for folks while getting that other information you all are suggesting. So after that question, we move on to the last page and that's just the, the overall satisfaction data, which will give you all some more longitudinal, longitudinal information on how these things compare to your past surveys and then our respondent information to help us delineate the staff, the parents and the non-staff and non-parents, as you have pointed out, who are the, the large majority of everyone who will get the survey. Any questions or thoughts on the survey here?
Has your admin team had a chance to make sure these are the most appropriate?
We're gonna be adding that to our conversation tomorrow morning for our meeting.
Because I knew that you kind of copied and pasted it from another survey, which was, you know.
You're talking about the satisfactory questions?
Uh, no, the community engagement sessions, like the topics. I just wanted to make sure there was nothing that was missing or something that was, you know, not necessarily
Question. Thank you for reflecting on that. We are gonna talk about that tomorrow morning. One had to do with the geothermal piece. Dave Reed has done a really fantastic job of just talking with our geothermal partners and estimating it to be about a million dollars is what I heard Ryan say. That would add about two cents or two dollars per every $100,000 of equalized property value to the question. But we've chosen not to ask that question. What are your thoughts about that? Shouldn't we ask the question to see if people want to? Or do you feel like?
My first thought is like, it's more about the big picture and I don't want people to get lost on a specific way that we might construct the facility. It'd be like asking if we wanted a better roof or, I'm trying to think of like, what else you might add on, direct solar, you know, the other things you might be considering. I'd rather get there straight up and down on that big price tag and if they feel like it's a worthwhile investment.
So, in your conversations, this is just a question, but has it been considered just to add that to the project and make this a $35 million ask and a 76 cent mill rate increase?
Isn't that a 34?
I think that's already, it's already.
Thinking about differentiating it out so that people could have that decision was the question, I think.
I agree with that. I mean, I feel like a million dollars is a lot of money, but it's a small percentage, 33 overall. It's just a level of detail that I.
I think we can rest comfortably in the wise use of taxpayer dollars with that extra million because of the payback
Right.
that we've already seen on the PC. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a defensible position, so I, I think yes, let's give the big vote and then if we have to, we can come back with a chainsaw. Thank you for entertaining the question.
Again, I'm, I'm curious for those who haven't been in the room for all these discussions, like big picture. Because it's, you walk into and we'll look at that referendum, you know, the survey and say, what's missing, what's hitting? Because we've done a lot of, had a lot of conversations where a lot of things have moved around and sometimes you can lose the forest for the trees.
I mean, when I read through it, I, I don't understand the, necessarily the satisfaction side of this. I, I get why we're gathering that data, but at the same time, we're really looking at a single question here. Quite honestly, put it on one page. It can't be done, but I, I understand why we're getting it, so I'm not, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I just, if I'm reading it for the first time, I'm like, oh, they're asking me for 34 million, they're doing terrible.
I mean, since we just asked these questions not that long ago, I would almost rather see us use the space to provide more information on what we're doing, but not a hill I'd die on, so.
What other information would you wanna, I mean?
I mean, personally, I would love to see every bullet point we have, one through 11, and like a, like a rash, like what, how it fits into what we're telling them. So like, obviously we need kindergarten because we're gonna demolish the kindergarten building. We need to, you know, renovate because it ties to, like, I would love to see everything ticked and tied so that there's no question on why it's on our list, like, like I said, like, why do you have to move the tech? Well, the room floods.
We do, if, if we added earlier on that the early learning center currently houses kindergarten, you know, and we talked about demolishing that building. And the next page then says add kindergarten classrooms, so do you think some, a lot of those things are connected? And pretty logical to, to why you need to add them?
We also,
With the, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, we also list like, I don't know, five, six, seven, nine, 10, like 13 things of the problem and only three reasons, or three things that we're solving. Like, here's the advantages to this. Well, there are way more than three advantages, like, so I feel like there, I mean, there's a lot. Granted, I know everybody reads in Twitter 240 characters or whatever it is, but we've listed all these things and then our advantages are three. I feel like there should at least be.
Rob had a good reason for why we had only three. I can't remember what it was of something that, but we did talk about that, because I raised that point and he was like, less is more, was basically the bottom line.
When we sold the 2017 referendum, we focused on schools' safety, infrastructure and classrooms for the 21st century. That's about all that people will kind of glom onto and then you layer in the details through communication. And part of the thoughtful feedback that I'm hearing tonight might be that we work on a video that could go out in tandem with the survey when it goes out and push that out through social media and all, doing the explanations that have been suggested about connecting the dots. Because you're right, there's only so much space and there's such a great story to tell. Let, let's try to, to fill in those, those details.
I also feel a little bit like our advantages should be in a different order. Like security and safety should probably be first because if I didn't know better, I'd be like, well, 34 million so staff don't have to travel between two buildings seems crazy. So like, I don't want someone to read that and then stop. Like, okay, not for 34 million. I would start with safety. I would start with educational opportunities. I think the staff traveling is, is a great reason for us to do it, but I don't think it should be our number one thing on all this.
That's a good point, yeah, reorder those.
Especially for $34 million.
I think you do educational first because of sizing with that previous paragraph.
I can't wait for the video. Testimonials from everyone.
You're first.
This is gonna be, I first, uh, because.
We do have one more question. This is like a process question. Is there an easier way to obtain another code? Because we get the thing mailed to us and we get emailed to us, but if, like I have three voters in my house, I know the third voter is not going to call and get another code. Or if you work Monday through Friday, the same time the district office is open, you might not be able to call to get another code.
So, and Rob, thank you for, correct me if I'm wrong, but really it's the only way to sort of protect, ensuring that folks won't use more than one code, is having them have to call in or reach out. You know, I, I think someone could perhaps email the district with a request or, you know, email and say, call me at these times, but we can't just like leave surveys at a community center or anything like that because that's when you get ripe for.
Yeah, no, and I get that, but even like a, an email that someone could, you know, surveyinformation@mounthorvescultures.org or whatever, like somewhere that they could eat. I just know that I have, if you could text or email to get a code, you're gonna hit the younger-ish population. I, I feel like.
Yeah, so that would be on the district side, because we, we will provide a, a list of extra codes, so I don't know if there's anything the district could set up, but certainly will provide as many extra codes as you all need to get requests for, if there's a convenient way to administrate that.
Yes, I can send you our referendum email account that we can start to fire back up again and we can monitor that account so we can get those codes out to people. Happy to do that.
I can add something on that front of page box to, to email. Yeah, great idea, thank you for that.
I, I wonder on the, going back to the questions about the satisfaction survey, I wonder if there's room maybe just after the header of overall satisfaction, for just a sentence that says like, your feedback's important to us and regularly try to collect it or something like that, to just introduce it so that it's not as jarring as like, do you want to spend $34 million? How are we doing? Like, you've got a little bit of a transition there.
Have a little introduction there. I, I think it is nice to have those questions, just as like, hey, we also want your thoughts, not just when we're asking for money,
Exactly.
but how we're doing, want that update, so it's good to have those, but I think a little transition, we can work something out.
Other than all that, this is going swiftly. It's a lot of work. Thank you to you three, thank you for everybody that's worked on this.
Anything else?
Maybe just,
Thank you all, appreciate the feedback tonight.
And Scott, we thank you, Dr. Rob, and I think I saw or heard Ryan's voice on this call as well. Board members, what we hope to do is bring this back as a potential action item to you at your April 1st meeting with the intent of pushing this out sometime mid-April. You can see that our goal is to have the survey close out on May 10th, which would allow school perceptions to cultivate the data and then be prepared to share the results with the board at their second meeting in May. I think that's like the 21st of May. I might be wrong about that, but thereabouts. So certainly if you have other suggestions that just kind of come to mind after this meeting, you know, you've got three great board members who are on that team. Of course, I'm happy to be of service to you so that we can get those suggestions onto the team and be ready to go as much as possible come April 1st, please, and thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Have a great rest of your night.
Take care now, guys.
All right, moving on to 60, information and advocacy report, regionally competitive compensation and benefits package.
Well, before you, you have some information on compensation for the 2023-2024 school year. There's a great partnership that we're a part of, over 50 school districts participate in submitting their compensation data so we can get some comparables. The district's comparables was decided back in 2017 with the districts Evansville, McFarland, Stoughton, Mountmore, Manona Grove, Oregon, DeForest, Wanakee, Verna and Middleton, Cross Plains. So we use that data and the numbers that you see. It is to note that Evansville did not share their data this year, so we do not have that as a comparable. As we look at this, it's important to also remember that this is really just compensation. This does not include health insurance, retirement benefits that we offer. That's important to note. I know we talked about a little bit that, about benefits are a really important piece to what we can offer, but very difficult to compare what our benefits are to other districts versus the variables in out-of-pocket costs, co-pays, deductibles, access. So it's hard to compare, but we do offer a great healthcare package in, in the last few years, minimal or no increase to our employees. It's also important to note that our support staff receives a $1,000 stipend if they do not qualify for benefits. That is not calculated in our comparables either, but something to note. I'm not going to go through each and every section on here, as I know you've seen it, but I wanted to highlight a few things. You will see in the, it'll, it'd be, it's broken up into different employee groups. Custodians, general education paraprofessionals, special education paraprofessionals, food service, administrative staff, bus drivers and faculty. When you look at custodians, general education paraprofessionals, as well as special education paraprofessionals, all on that same page, we are at or above the comparable average, the comparison average. Just to note, to custodians, speaking with other HR professionals, there are folks that hire out contracted staff. Of course, that could skew some of the numbers and we wouldn't be able to know their compensation, so just something to note in that category. On the next page, you'll see food service. There are also some districts that contract out food service. We are above, significantly above the comparative average. Administrative assistance, this was one category that we're slightly behind the comparison average. Also to note that overall, the average increased over $3 in the past year for districts. As we move on to bus drivers, this is an incredibly difficult comparison because there are very few districts in our comparables, or really regionally, that have their own fleet. So we are not able to compare directly with the private businesses that contract out their services, but with the districts of Middleton and Stoughton, we are able to see that we're right in the ballpark that we need to be as well. I know from negotiations and meeting confer, the last go-around, we made some great progress. As you can see here, to our faculty, we are above the comparative average. Even if you look at the median, we are, we are still above that. I think that is, we, the referendum has allowed us to really make a dent in all of these areas. When we look at what we recommend to be, to be in that mid-range for our faculty comparative, we're right where we need to be, or slightly higher. So we made a lot of progress this past year and it will be important to keep looking at this for years to come so we can maintain. So I, I feel like we're in a really advantageous spot where we'd like to be and it's a matter of maintaining, moving forward. Could I answer any questions about the bullet point?
So tell me about the partnership that you started with here as I'm looking at this, like 50 schools in joint. Who runs that, who's responsible for the data? Tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, um, I did not start that.
You started the conversation, is what I meant to say.
Yes, yes, yes. So that was started six years ago mainly with local regional districts. All districts are responsible, who are inputting, are responsible for inputting that data. We get that data much quicker than the state data. This is also the same data that we share with the state. We're just getting it quicker. Of course, all data is the accuracy of the inputter, right?
So it's just a centralized database? It's not like there's somebody scrubbing that data per se?
Correct, correct. And so we use it, you know, I think it's really helpful to use in this, but it also, like I said, there are intricacies that we aren't able to dive into. For example, the contracted services is just that or how the benefits affect these comparables.
So it's salaries only?
Salaries only, even wages, yes.
And there's no way to get a data point of benefits are X percent of salaries on average?
We don't have that, but we have plan designs from each of our partners.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Good questions.
When you look at what this board has been able to do in comparison with the size of our school district, we are, our strategic plan has been to be at the middle of the pack. We're not in a position to lead, whereas a Verona and a Middleton, Cross Plains has a significant research park, built business park that is able to pull the kind of tax base that would allow for them to have wages that lead the region. For us to be at the middle of the pack speaks volumes about what you've done and what the community has done to reward and recognize our employees. They are so very deserving of the, of the compensation adjustment that's occurred and allows us to stay competitive. But I think it's important to note, the school district size we are in comparison with those other communities, how very fortunate we are to be where we are. And that doesn't happen without your leadership, so thank you.
To your point, DPI doesn't collect data on compensation packages, like benefits packages either, so I don't know how we could get to that.
It would be some agreement with this partnership would be the only way to do that, but I, again, if nobody's actually managing the data, I don't know whether it's helpful. It's helpful to know that we know it's real, otherwise it's not.
Anecdotally, I would suggest that our post-employment benefits remain very, very favorable in comparison with these other groups. And I would suggest maybe that's why some of them are able to offer a higher wage because they've shifted the cost of post-employment benefits onto their employees. I would suggest that a lot of school districts have moved to high deductible health insurance reimbursement arrangements. One district that's often lauded as being the North Star for us in our comparisons, what's often lost in their wages is not recognize the fact that those folks have a very different health insurance model, which actually hurts them in terms of choice when it comes to their plan design. So on balance, I think if you were to do just as Joel has suggested, to look at the total picture, what we call remuneration versus compensation, Mount Hora would stand at the top or very close second to what we see against our comparables. And that's only possible because of the operational referendum and the support that we've got from our community.
Erin, in the last two years since the operational referendum, and I know this is a loaded question, but just from your standpoint, is there a category on page three, four, or five that is more of a concern or harder to hire for that you see?
Um...
Or I guess what are your challenges? Is there a specific niche that is a challenge for you?
I found it interesting, you know, I included how much each category, the average wage increase was. I think I noted that the administrative assistance increased much more than some of the other categories. That happens to be also the one that we are not above the average. So I think that, that was interesting to me when looking at the data. I wouldn't say that's a hard-to-fill position for us, but I think it was important to note here. I think overall, and I can't speak from previous years other than, you know, what I've heard or what I've seen on paper, I didn't experience myself. I've heard from various areas that our staffing levels are where they need to be, from bus drivers to custodians. When we do have an open position, we are able to fill it pretty easily. I do think it's because we're competitive. One reason, not the other reason.
I might also offer one more reflection. One of the things that we're finding is many people leaving some of our other competitors, if you will, to come to Mount Hora. In fact, oftentimes, we're hiring people who are not at the beginning of their professional career and in fact, their mid-career, perhaps maybe even mid-to-late career. And that has been a big boon for us. We're not focused on just trying to find the cheapest employee. We're focused on trying to find the very best employee to put in front of our kids each and every day. And so we're very fortunate to be attracting folks in ways that other districts are, quite frankly, a bit envious of. And I think that speaks volumes about the kinds of kids that we serve and the kind of professional development we offer our staff in general. When people come here, they stay here. We don't see a large amount of turnover as you saw in our last report.
Which is why I think we need to get that retirement benefits message out there because if I'm looking at this data, I see the attraction part of the equation very well. The retention part, just with this data, doesn't look as good because we lag on the maximum when it comes to compensation. But to use your words, when we look at remuneration, I don't think that's the case. So that's a story we have to find a way to tell. I don't know if we do that through comparable or just through...
I was going to say, that's definitely when we onboard staff and are in the hiring process, when we talk about not just salary, but what our benefits look like because I think that's an important piece to talk with staff when they're making their decision. Am I going to accept this in our retirement? Those pieces are something we try to highlight in our hiring process as well.
So this is a really broad question and it may be for either of you. Just talking about the need to stay competitive, like we made this dent, but how do we keep the momentum going? There's a, you know, there's a pot of body you're working from, but what are maybe some strategies, some philosophies in terms of how you can stretch that dollar and make sure that you're rewarding people that, a framework that you're working from, a mindset?
Yeah, I think it's to balance just all of those different pieces from the health insurance as well as our overall compensation. I think listening to our employees is always really, really important to what's important. Is it really important to keep our health insurance low, our premium costs low? We've been very fortunate in the last few years to not have much of an increase, but when that comes, that's the input we want from our, from our staff and that collaboration process and hearing their voice in that is really important because that is what's going to keep people here.
I would agree with you. Obviously, employee engagement is key to that because we want to satisfy them both personally and professionally based upon their needs. From strictly financial lens, I think we need to continue to do everything we can to not only get to that CPI you, you've been reading in the paper. One major school district in this region has already signaled that they're not going to even offer a wage increase to their staff. This is an opportunity for us to hopefully continue to edge forward and continue to reward and recognize staff. I think as much as we can, offer step movement to our faculty and staff as well. There's something to be said about the amount of time someone's served in their role, that that also be a recognition of their outstanding efforts. And then engage them when there's opportunity for additional funding to be available around meet and confer topics. So one topic that we know is very near and dear to this board is around co-curricular, willing to do everything we can in order to attract and retain high-quality coaches, sponsors of our activities. And that will, as you know, and our friends at the MHA know, is part of our centerpiece to the MHA's meet and confer process. We're glad that we're able to engage in that topic this year. So as much as we can, as you have done proactively to carve out funding to support and keep people, that's important. Especially at a time when many school districts are declining enrollment, right?
Other questions or comments for Erin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aubrey, the Advertising, Donations, and Sponsorship Act.
As part of the board, one of the board's focus, your focus, I've been helping to set up the process for enabling businesses to advertise at our events and undertaking sponsorships alongside you all, Dr. Solerino, as well as staff, community members, a few members at our booster clubs, including Kirk, thinking presumably, as well as other school districts. I've crafted a guide that breaks down set opportunities, real policies, as well as the agreements and forms. This all has been a super collaborative and iterative process. I just am so appreciative to all of you for helping me throughout the entire process. I definitely couldn't have done it without each of you, man. So I appreciate it. Just a quick overview, this is a discussion item. This guide includes an overview of the district, purpose of the guide, the contract information, definitions of advertisements, donations, and sponsorships, and then a detailed list of the advertisement opportunities, donation opportunities, and the sponsorship opportunities, the appropriate forms, sample signage, and an appendix that allows users to view all of the opportunities at a glance. So I'd love to hear any feedback that I haven't already heard from all of you. I know that we've been so many, so many meetings together. Thank you for that. I appreciate your time. Open to anything. I know, Jim, I haven't, haven't had the pleasure of hearing any of your feedback yet.
Yeah, I know, I have been in conversation with others, so I know that this is a topic, but can you just help all of us better understand how we came to, again, with this being the first one, I'm not being critical one way or the other, but how did we come to some of these sponsorship levels?
Good question. So a lot of it rests on the great work that school districts around us have done previously. So we're not reinventing the wheel. This is very much something that others have found works for their district. They've passed it by their attorneys, they've reviewed it with their communities, and they've identified these particular, like, for example, library naming rights as something that folks are interested in their community sponsoring and having naming rights. Regarding the costs that also comes from there, as well as discussions with community members, representative boards, Dr. Solerino, folks like that. So it's been very collaborative.
It was born from school board convention.
I understand that. I attended that. I think it's a good idea. You've done wonderful work. I appreciate all you've done, so just one thought there. Second thought is just how, like, we should come up with a process of how we renew this. You know, so if there's an item that is not being sponsored, do we, how do we change that sponsorship level? I think it should be known to everybody just so if somebody doesn't pay this price for that sponsorship and all of a sudden the guy comes out next week and it's a lower price on something else that they were considering. So, you know, I think we should be pretty transparent on when we are revisiting this and refreshing this.
There is something to be said about market conditions and we absolutely, Aubrey and I have been talking about, we referenced this just briefly during this afternoon's KAL meeting, that we believe we need to monitor the market conditions to see that if something's not selling at $15,000, then we need to have an honest conversation about, all right, is that just too much? Or if things are popping too fast, are we selling our soul too quickly?
Especially being the first, first round at this.
And the other thing we want to be very clear about, and if you hear us say anything tonight, please hear us say this, and that is, we're not expecting everything to be sold on this, on this, in this packet and in people. I want to manage expectations. We certainly want to do everything we can to communicate and let people know of the partnerships that we're interested in, but we also recognize this is an evolutionary process, not a revolutionary process.
I have one thought. I know that it was requested that we pull the policies out of here, which I agree with. That's fine with me. But I do wonder if we just at some point, somewhere, just link to them for ease, especially if this is going to be an online document. I was looking at the appendix, like, it doesn't belong in this list, but if there's an appendix A and B, you know, just...
One thing that we did, and I don't know if this solves your problems, let me know, or your item that you bring up. So in the applications themselves, we say, like, details about the procedures may be found in administrative regulation 851A, and we'll have it later there. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Yep. I was standing for it and I didn't see it, so.
Thanks for completely understanding.
Yeah.
Once it's blue and linked, so just FYI, I'm saving the linking part of my task to the very end because all of the items change and that's a lot of work to link everything. So once it's linked, I'm sure you have no problem with it, but I get why you didn't see it.
Yeah, no, I heard you say that and that when I was in my, when I was driving earlier, I just didn't hear the previous part, so I knew links were coming. So I apologize if someone already asked that.
No, no. Anything else? Comments, questions?
Just the mechanics of it, out of five-year agreement. One, was just curious about the length of time, how we decided that. And then two, are people paying just annually that sum? Or is it a sum that's upfront and what stops them from running out of cash at year three? You know, that type of thing.
It's a good point. So currently, you can either pay lump sum or you can pay between years. Obviously, lump sum is better for us at least. But we can always, in this agreement, there's language that basically says we can discontinue our agreement for any reason. One being if they run out of money to afford this, which, I mean, it happens. Gosh, there's just always a, there's a will, there's a way, so there's an opportunity for them to exit. Good question.
Good. I think the other step back question, just in looking at this, I mean, there's, there's a lot here. There's a lot of options. There's a lot of management of this. How confident are we feeling structurally, you know, as a district to be able to support the ongoing management of this program?
Great question. If all of them were to be sponsored, then I'd be like, oh my gosh. But considering that we, I would expect to have about three to five, I think the management is pretty fixable. I'll let you know if we get upwards of 20 sponsors in one year, but I think we'll be okay.
Good.
That's part of why we also standardize the amount of time, the five years.
Yeah.
Administer via wise, it becomes very difficult to keep track of it. So to your first question, that's why we arrived in five years. Next steps for us are, what we'd like to do is bring this back to the board for an action item on April 1st. Prior to doing that, we purposely held off on connecting with legal counsel because this has been a topic that has offered and invited a lot of feedback from a lot of people. And we wanted to make certain that we were about 95% of the way there before we kept on going back to legal counsel. If you have any additional suggestions for improvements to this, please know we welcome that. But my guess is we'll likely want to try to push this out to counsel by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. So if I could trouble you to send that to Aubrey and/or myself, and we'll try to weave it in as appropriate. And if we can't, we'll provide you with a rationale for why. And then we will provide you with a final product on April 1st. And then, we will provide you with a final product on April 1st with the links, and hopefully, legal counsel's background support. Thank you, thank you, thank you to Aubrey Hanks for her extraordinary efforts. This is really remarkable work. It exceeds in every way possible what we could have imagined.
Team effort. Thank you.
Number seven, our action items. To begin with, filling a board of roles, our vice president role and chair of building grounds and transportation. So far, we have two people who have suggested, not suggested, who have stated that they are interested in the vice president role. I'm not sure if they're official, they're not, are they official self-nominations?
Thank you. What we would need, great question, and thank you to those board members who've considered taking on this role in the interim period between now and the Board of Education's May 6 reorganization meeting. We would need an official nomination, and then a second, and then if there's anybody else who wants to make a nomination, you might remember this process from when we've done reorganizations in the past, we certainly...
I know, it was three times.
That's a pretty good memory. And in the event that we need to, we have strips here so people can vote to silently share their input on that. Does that help to guide the conversation?
Yes.
Excellent.
Adam doesn't, his computer died, so I would just say that Adam and Carly have both said that they would be willing to serve...
Thanks.
Co-vice presidents.
You need some Carly Mertz of Adam Fisher?
So, we need to have a official nomination, and then a second, and then another official nomination, and a second, and then...
So, the one nomination would be acted upon first?
Okay. All right, I will nominate Carly.
I'll second that.
I will nominate Adam.
Which of, which of, Carly first?
I apologize.
I'm going to. Carly, you wish not to. Okay. Leah has nominated, Joel has seconded the nomination of Carly for the role of vice president. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Oh, yes, I need to vote then.
I heard three.
So, four. I'll say, I'll say aye to Carly, I'll say yes to Carly as well.
Well, then, we filled that role here tonight, and congratulations. Thank you to Joel, to Adam, and to Carly for your thoughtfulness.
And then, we also have the role of chair for buildings...
Wait, I'm confused.
Why?
You asked for nominations, and we did nominations. Then you have to ask for nominations again.
But it was already voted, she already...
But you asked her if she accepted the nomination. So, then, we did, you have to, you have to say, is there a nomination? And then, we voted. Then we said, yes, we nominated. Then you have to say, are there any more nominations? And then, he could nominate Adam. And then, you say, are there any more nominations? And then, after three times, no more nominations, then we have to vote.
You can certainly do it that way, and that's the tradition we've done. If you'd like to, we can come back and redo it.
Oh, I don't care. I was just going in order of how they were listed here. I don't know, and we could very easily split the vote, so...
Because I'm gonna nominate Jim.
Then you're the treasurer.
You're right, Leah, we could absolutely do that.
As the, as the other candidate, I'm just fine with this election.
Okay. I just wanted to make, wait, I was just reading in order, so I think you both did a fantastic job.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, just confused.
Okay. Chair for buildings, grounds, and transportation. Jim and Joel, are either of you interested?
I'm here on the upper finance, right? So, I can fill this chair, and everybody else will.
I nominate Joel.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, Joel has been nominated as chair of buildings, grounds, and transportation, seconded by Leah. All those, oh, no, you seconded Jim? Carly, or Leah nominated, Jim seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you for that. Seven B, second reading of approval of revisions to the 2426 employee handbook.
Yes, this is the second reading. There are no adjustments from the first. Rather, just wanted to emphasize, again, the work of the personnel committee that included both board members and staff in making these adjustments. If approved, between now and the end of the year, we'll be working on communicating with staff the changes, and this will be going into effect July 1st, 2024. This is the second reading. Does anyone have any questions or follow-ups, since we talked about it before? Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Adam, to approve the revisions to the 2426 employee handbook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Nice job, Erin.
Consideration of approval for the 2425 school fees, Dr. Solerino.
Yeah, keep this rather quick, because there's not too many changes to this year's fees as opposed to in prior years. Really, the bulk of our fees, our increases are a result of commodities and the prices of food. Everything else has remained the same, with the exception of two pieces. First, our choir robe cleaning fee. We're proposing that we eliminate or we remove that choir robe fee, as we've not really had a need to do that, as we have not had, I think, board member Lipska brought this to our attention, so we're grateful for that. And then, we're also proposing a reduction in the amount of our assignment notebook. We've reached a better deal with our vendor, and so, that now is returning back to, we're proposing that return back to $3. I'd ask for your consideration of these, of these fees for next year, please.
I don't know if something's going on with Word docs, because stuff keeps disappearing, but like, now I have, I don't, this is what I saw earlier, and now I pull it up, and it's PDF, and it's not the same, and it has $15 for the robe fee. I don't know what's going on. You couldn't get it earlier, now mine's not working, so I'm not sure what is going on.
Pulled it up and got the same. Are you logged in? Because I have both, I have the PDF version, and I have the red library.
I've had to log in three times today, so I think it kicked me out again, because I have no administrative content. So, the PDF doesn't match that what's in the administrative content, so we're voting on what's in the administrative content.
You are voting, please hold. The only thing I see here is the public content.
Why? I don't see any administrative.
Oh, okay, so, but my, so mine does not look, mine doesn't look like, can you, can you look at this and prove that I am not an insane person? It says $15 right there.
Correct.
Yours says $0. Why is yours different than mine?
Yours is a special edition.
Mine is a special edition. No, it's Samsung.
Oh, well, then, it should be right. Yeah?
Okay, just ignore me and all of the issues that this thing is having. It's fine. Motion to approve, the one that's on screen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam, to approve our 2425 school fees. Does anyone have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Consideration of our 2425 CISA V service contract.
Yes, again, as we turn our eye towards next school year, you'll see a proposal for us to continue our partnership with CISA V for next year. We often need additional support from our neighboring agencies to help us, instead of hiring a full-year teacher of a deaf or hard of hearing, we just contract services out. This is something that is less than $25,000, but we felt like, because it is a contract for, for student services, and we've done this in the past, we thought we'd bring this to the board just for their information, but then also their approval, please, and thank you.
Is the 380 hours?
Ah, yes.
Okay. And has that, that's been consistent over the last few years?
It's gone up a little bit, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't seem to remember how much, but it, it's been commensurate with what we've seen with wages all around the region.
So, the rate per hour has stayed?
Rate per hour is what's gone up.
That's what's gone up.
Yeah, we've kept the number of hours the same, though. Good questions, thank you.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve the 2425 CISA V service contract. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Moving on, first reading, consider revisions to Board Policy 840, Public Gift Schools. Aubrey and Scott.
All right, so, as referred to, referred by the finance committee, the goal is to separate policy from procedure, which ensures that users can clearly understand what the policy dictates, separate from how to enact it. I think we've done this across the board, this is new, but we typically identify procedure in admin reg, so that's what we would love to do here. It might not look like it, but a majority of the language is the same as before. Just, we've made an overview here, and then the admin reg that goes with this policy has the rest of the procedures in it. Any particular questions?
Can we can approve some first reading? Yes. Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Joel. Any further discussion? First reading, so, we'll call Joel.
Yes.
Leah, yes.
Jim? Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I also, yes. Thank you both. Number eight, citizens' council.
Tom, Tom Schlemminger died. I'll be quick. Tom Schlemminger, one child in the district. I was just gonna have a couple of comments on the questionnaire going out to the public, maybe. On the survey, maybe at the end, I know there was discussion at last referendum meeting about, maybe we make a sentence or something that says, we're hoping that this covers a lot of the building upgrades for the, for the near future. I know there is a discussion about playing fields and stuff, but I know the public wants to know, we keep going back to them. They kinda wanna know where it ends, I guess. So, I don't know if that's something to put in there or not. And then, also related to that, was there any thoughts on the solar power, maybe for energy on the schools, on the, on the upgrade of the school, and what that would cost, maybe, and if that would make it more efficient? And then, also on that same questionnaire, you were looking at verbiage about the library. If you could just add one word, expand the undersized library, so that would be easy enough. And then, this is more of the meeting that was prior to this one. Dr. Solerino said, had a comment on the glass on the building for safety, and I guess, maybe I would like to have a discussion with someone about that later.